Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Lawndale City Council to order as well as the successor agency and the housing authority. Madam City Clerk, please conduct the roll call.
Okay, good evening. Mayor Protem Kearney.
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas.
Yes.
Councilmember Suarez.
Present.
Councilmember Talavera.
Here.
Mayor Pauline Miles.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I'm gonna ask Councilmember Frank Talavera to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by Reverend Matthew Harbison.
Place your right hand over your heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we thank you for the opportunity to gather today to conduct civil business here in a democratic process. We thank you that we are able to speak peacefully with one another. We thank you that although we may have different opinions, that we might be able to have them heard and that we might be able to come to a position where we are all here for the residents and the benefit of the people who live here in Lawndale and work here. We thank you for the time we have. We thank you that the electricity is on, the air conditioner is working. There's so many other wonderful things that are going on in the city. May we be a people who are thankful. May we be a people who are loving to one another and may our representatives continue to do their best to represent the people in which they serve. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend. Okay, let's have our public safety report. Let's hear from Lieutenant Osborne from the L.A. County Sheriff Department.
Honey, I shrunk the councilwoman.
Two sides, sure.
Teamwork makes the dream work. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and esteemed members of the City Council. I'm Lieutenant Ricky Osborne. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for May 5th through May 19th. I will begin by discussing notable arrests and investigations. On May 5th at approximately 8:30 PM, Deputy Koger was on patrol in the area of Hawthorne Boulevard and 169th Street when he observed two males attempting to break into a parked vehicle. Both males were alerted to the presence of law enforcement and fled on foot while clutching their waistbands. A short time later, residents in the 4400 block of 169th called South LA Station to report a prowler in the backyard. Deputy Koger detained the prowler and recognized him as the one of the individuals that ran earlier. Deputy Koger recovered a firearm from the rear of the residential property. After a thorough investigation, Deputy Koger determined the prowler he detained had been in possession of the firearm and arrested him for various felony weapons violations. The suspect was a Lawndale resident. On May 13th, detectives from our Operation Safe Street Bureau, which is our gang detectives, conducted a multi-location search warrant in response to a recent graffiti arrest. During the operation, an illegally possessed firearm was recovered from a resident in the 16800 block of Grevillea Avenue, and one person was arrested for various felony weapons violations. On May 15th at approximately 7:50 PM, a carjacking occurred in the unincorporated area of Lenox where two suspects stole the victim's vehicle by brandishing a firearm. In the early morning hours of May 16th, Deputy Briso was alerted to the stolen vehicle was scanned by the automatic license plate recognition cameras in Lawndale. Deputy Briso located the vehicle driving northbound Hawthorne Boulevard near 147th Street. Deputy Briso attempted to stop the vehicle, but the driver failed to yield. A vehicle pursuit ensued. The vehicle pursuit ended in the area of Lenox where both occupants fled on foot and were eventually arrested. The driver and passengers of the vehicle were juveniles and detained for various felony violations. The vehicle was returned to the victim in the field. During the reporting period, three stolen vehicles were recovered and returned to the rightful owners with the assistance of the Alper cameras in the city of Lawndale. During this time, the traffic incidents, motorcycle traffic enforcement Deputy Morales and the SAO deputies issued approximately 39 traffic violations during this rating period, including failing to stop at stop signs, speeding, and other various vehicle code violations. Specifically, there were six citations issued around the area of 166th Street and Freeman Avenue for failure to stop at the stop sign. Lastly, community engagement. The next scheduled Neighborhood Watch meeting is set for Wednesday, May 28th at 6:00 PM at the Harold Hoffman Community Center. The next Coffee with a Cop event will be Wednesday, May 28th from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM at Piggy's Restaurant at 4601 Rosecrans Avenue. I want to invite all the Lawndale residents to the gatherings where they can discuss important public safety issues in and around their neighborhood with local law enforcement and fellow community members. This concludes my report. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you for their report. Are there any questions of the captain's report, the tenant's report? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, let's hear from the Los Angeles County Fire Department with an update.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is David Christian. I'm the battalion chief covering for Assistant Chief Brian Kane tonight. Thank you for allowing me to be here. Fortunately, last month, I'm gonna cover the incidents from April 1st, 2025 to April 30th, 2025, and again, fortunately, there were no major incidents in the city of Lawndale. There were four working fires, two of which were vehicle fires and two of which were outdoor rubbish fires. There were 127 emergency response calls. Of those 127 calls, 30 of those were taken by paramedics to the local hospitals. 72 additional were transferred from the ALS units to the BLS ambulance, and then they were transferred to the local hospitals. The additional 30 were, there were five that signed out against medical advice. There was one person who was deceased upon fire department arrival, and the rest were false alarms. There were four hazardous condition calls. These are usually, these are hazardous incidents which do not involve fire, and they all included gas leaks inside a residence or a commercial structure. The rest of the 59 responses by Fire Station 21 were either false alarms or good intent calls such as branches down, electrical issues, things of that nature. That concludes my report for April. Do you have any questions for me?
Councilmember, are there any questions? Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you for their report. Okay, we got a couple of presentations tonight, in particular, two. We got a plaque to recognize our Lawndale Outstanding Older American, Mr. Jay Gould. Each year, the city of Lawndale, in coordination with the Los Angeles County Commission for Older Adults and the Department of Aging and Disability, recognizes older Americans for their service to their community. This year, Jay Gould was selected as the honoree to represent the city of Lawndale as its outstanding older American. Jay Gould has lived in the city of Lawndale his entire life. In 2010, the city of Lawndale recognized him for 20 years of service to the community for his annual Fourth of July Firecracker Hoops Classic Basketball Tournament. Mr. Gould's passion for community involvement doesn't end there. He has continued his voice as a community activist known for his voice regarding the future impacts of the Metro C-line project through Lawndale. Mr. Gould's participation is with enthusiasm in matters pertaining to life in Lawndale. He is an example of lifelong commitment to the future of Lawndale. Mr. Gould will be recognized by the Los Angeles County Commission for Older Adults at an event later this week. Please join me in the City Council members in giving a round of applause as we recognize Jay Gould as Lawndale's 2025 Outstanding Older American. Jay, please join us at the podium. I got a new suit, just like that. He said he learned from me. Okay. You're getting taller every time I see you. Oh, my God, look how tall you are. Jay Gould, 2025 Older, Outstanding Older American, presented by the city of Lawndale. We commend you for your outstanding senior community involvement in the city of Lawndale, including your selection as Lawndale's 2025 Outstanding Older American Honoree in the future, recognized by the Los Angeles and further recognized by the Los Angeles County Commission for Older Adults, the Second Supervisory District, presented this day, May 19th, 2025, city of Lawndale, Los Angeles County, California. It actually doesn't say all that. Yeah. 9020. You wanna say a few words?
No.
Okay.
This is my wife, guys. Most of you know that. That's the only woman I know that walks on water.
Congratulations. Okay, I'm gonna ask the Mayor Protem to make the presentation for the City of Lawndale Proclamation Concerning the 65th Annual National Public Works Week.
All righty. This year marks the 65th year of National Public Works Week, celebrating the tens of thousands of men and women in North America who provides and maintains an infrastructure and services known as public works. From the maintenance streets, ground workers, engineers, inspectors, analysts, administrative support staff, and management, each member of the public works team plays an essential part in the day-to-day operations of the city of Lawndale. In recognition of Public Works Week, we would like to invite Director of Public Works, Lucio Rodriguez, to the podium to receive this proclamation on behalf of his dedicated staff in recognizing the importance of essential workday each day every one of them does in the city. On behalf of Lawndale City Council, we hereby proclaim May 18th to 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Weeks and present this proclamation to the Public Works Department.
So I understand that the Public Works is gonna have an ice cream social? Why don't you invite everyone to?
Yes, you're correct. We're having an ice cream social coming up tomorrow. The hours gap, if somebody has a bit, 1:00 to 2:00. Yes. It's between 1:00 and 2:00 after lunch.
Okay, and we want to present you with this proclamation on behalf of, any of your team members here?
No.
No, no? They out doing public, they out doing public works.
They are working hard.
Yeah. Well, we want to present you with this official proclamation, the City of Lawndale Proclamation 65th Annual National Public Works Week, May 18th through the 24th, 2025. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That side of the, that side of the mayor having problems there.
Okay, let's have public comments or communications. Anyone like to provide oral communication to this body, being the Lawndale City Council, the successor agency, and/or the housing authority? You may do so at this time. Please start with your name. When you come to the podium, start with your name first. At about two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on on the screen to give you the signal to start wrapping things up. You don't have to wait for your name to be called, just after the person that's before you has concluded. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I brought some pictures here tonight. You guys could pass them around. But I wanted to talk about was, there was a house that was for rent and they moved out. And what did they do? They leave a big old tire. For two weeks, it was curbside. But what I was trying to address was, since the street sweeper goes by and there's usually a parking person, do they have the right to mark down certain things that are left behind, bulked stuff? I know trash doesn't pick up tires. I get that. I don't know how to dispose of a tire. But anyway, then the tire moved, somebody moved a tire over to the house next door because that's under construction, and now the tire is disappeared. It's gone. So somebody did end up picking it up. My other complaint is, for some reason, fire hydrants seem to be the place to dump trash all the time. I don't know what it is, but people like to dump trash by a fire hydrant. There was an oversized chair or loveseat dumped on 147th. Closer to Condon where those condos are, there's that little back gate. That's been picked up too. That is gone. I was keeping an eye on that. This has some, this hydrant still has some trash, and this is on Condon and 148th. And then last week, the trash truck came in my block, which is the cul-de-sac. It had a really bad oil leak. It has leaked, you guys could look at these, all over our block. And then I also went down other blocks, and of course, this isn't, my block is bad because they stop and then they collect all that, they bring the cans out to it. And so then when it turns around, it just dumped so much oil on our block. So I just wanted to make a complaint about that. Other than that, everything's fine. Oh, and Happy Memorial Day too, next Monday.
Oh, yeah. That's right. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Bridget Miller. I've been here several times in the past. Today, I'm here to complain about 145th and Avis. I've spoken with the Public Works several times about coming out to survey the area. I finally got an answer from Nick on last Wednesday. He left a message saying that it does not meet the criteria to put a three-way stop sign there. The traffic is bad. In the mornings, I can't get out of my driveway because of the school traffic. Then it's blocked on Prairie, it's blocked on Avis, and it backs up. And that's because when they come down 145th off of Prairie, they can't get out on Avis because the north and southbound traffic keeps going and they can't get out. So I'm stuck in my driveway, people pulling, blocking the driveway. So my complaint is, we do need a three-way stop sign because even on the weekends, you can't see that north and southbound traffic. I've been almost hit several times inching out to get out. So I understand the traffic is bad, parking is really bad because there's so many cars now. I live in an area where there are apartments and condos, and I understand children are staying home now because it's too expensive to move out. So if they can send someone out again during the school hours, you'll see all that traffic that's backed up on Prairie, backed up on Avis and 145th Street. And why they can't meet the criteria because they have the same scenario over on Larch and 145th Street. And all around the area, they have stop signs. So my understanding is why it will not meet the criteria. Also, I want to thank you for putting that walk, the signal at 145th and Prairie between the city of Hawthorne and the city of Lawndale. I pleaded that case, and you guys finally did that. So I'm begging, please put a stop sign at 145th and Avis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matthew Harbison, resident of Lawndale. Just wanted to say especially to the Public Works, thank you. A lot of graffiti keeps getting painted over and other things. You guys are on your job, here doing your stuff. I know there's a lot of things going on, and also want, I don't know if it was a Good Samaritan, I don't know if it was Metro, I don't know if it was you, but somebody put some asphalt in the railroad track where the hole was over on 170th. And so where that was a massive hole, and I don't know if it was a budgetary thing, I don't know what happened. I just know that there was a massive hole, and the other day I drove over it, and there was a bunch of asphalt that was in the hole, so now it's not a dangerous thing. If you didn't do it and you needed to reassess it to make sure just a concerned citizen didn't just fill it with asphalt, I don't know. I just know that right now, 170th, where there was a hole and the wood had already deteriorated, it's now been full. So if you took care of it, thank you. If somebody else did, Metro maybe out there, thank you. I don't know. But one way or another, I just want to commend our Public Works Department and the job and what you're doing. So thank you.
Okay. Let's close public comments and bring it up to the diocese for discussion. Let's hear from Councilmember Talavera.
Okay, welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming out and being with us, and thank you for bringing us your concerns. And definitely, the trash problem is a problem, and especially if they're leaving oil splotches on our streets. So I don't know if we can talk to them and let them know what's going on.
Mr. Mayor, council, we'll look into the bulky items missing, dumping around fire hydrants, the trash truck oil leak, Richard will follow up with Republic, and then also, it sounds like Public Works is already working on 145th and Avis, so we'll follow back up with that and double check it and go out and check during school times.
And Ms. Miller, I hear you because I have the same problem on 154th and Menzel in Pomona because Adams, Adams School traffic rotates around to my street. So I have to avoid 8:00 and 3:00 because the traffic just backs up. So I don't know if there's something we can do about those school areas to minimize the traffic or, you know, to help alleviate the problem. Also, I've heard complaints on, from residents on 140, 145th, oh, no, 156th on my side. So I know it's something that we should probably look into.
We'll definitely look into it with that and have staff follow up.
Okay, and also in conjunction with Matt, I too want to recognize and appreciate Public Works for all they do, their hard work and their dedication. At the beginning of my term, I had a visit with Lucio and the team, and all of them expressed such a desire and such a... of them expressed such a desire and such overwhelming pride to work for the city. So I hope it's not just for the benefits. I hope it's because they love their job and they, they really, uh, want to do a good job. Over in education, uh, sometimes, uh, there would be graffiti on the walls, uh, in the bathroom or on the hallways, and it just seemed like some of the custodians lost their, the pride factor because instead of painting with a nice square over the graffiti, it was just like slapped on and, and whatever the image was there, you, was coming through. So, you know, it's, sometimes I would, one time I did, I got my old paint brush and can and painted over because I, I needed to see a square, I needed to see some, uh, uh, something symmetrical, not just a, you know, willy-nilly brush, so. But I want to thank Lucho and his team because, uh, uh, they, they, for all the work they do and, um, and the care that they give us, uh, give to our city. Thank you, Lucho.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Suarez.
Thank you to everybody that came out today. My colleague covered it pretty well. There was one question, however, that I did want to ask. It was with regards to the trucks, the trash trucks, and if we had an estimated time for when we can expect them to have the new trucks? I know they were saying they were having trouble getting them, so have we had any updates? If not, can we follow up?
Ma- Mayor, Council, I did ask the Republic Representative of Contract Cities, they didn't have any information. Do, I asked, I talked to Dawn specifically. Specifically, I asked about that green truck that was supposed to, was sending emails to all of us, and it hadn't arrived yet. She was following up with Devin, the regional manager, the gang was going to get back to me, but I'll definitely send an email as a reminder to find out when we're, what the status is on those trucks.
Okay, great. And that's all I had, thank you.
Councilwoman Quavis.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking, and also those that are watching us. I'm interested why we can't put a three-way stop on 145th and Avis if we see them everywhere else. So if we could add that to your plate, Lucho, that would be great. And also, I would like to thank staff for covering the hole on 170th, um, this weekend. Thank you for doing that.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Kearney.
Well, since my colleagues to my left and me already said everything, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. And about the trash truck, Dina, Dina go. Oh, there you are. I also spoke to Dawn Harris, which is representative, and I got an email two weeks, a week ago, from Republic saying the new trucks are supposed to be out. And that on my, my trash day was Tuesday, supposed to have a new truck out there. Well, all I saw was just three old trucks, same old trucks. So when I hit her up at Contract Cities, she knew nothing about the trucks supposed to be up, come out. Well, she came to find out, they only had two new trucks coming out. One for, resident for Landale, and one for another city. So she doesn't know when the new trucks are coming out. But my question is, I've seen some of our trash, uh, trucks, the drivers, picking up everything, they're not supposed to be picking up like oil, oil cans, and putting it in there. So I don't know if the trucks are leaking or the stuff in the dump site in the back is leaking, but maybe Sean can find out about that.
We'll do, Mayor, Council, check on that with the oil leak.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to thank everyone who came out to speak and share their concerns. We will make sure they're all are addressed, and particularly the, um, the oil leak from the truck, I would hazard a guess that it's probably the, the, the engine. Because you have the, um, I don't know just for a fact, but generally, it's the engine as opposed to the, because if you put, um, if you put oil in, it's going to mix with all the other stuff in there, so probably less likely to be, you know, um, the, the trash itself. But that raises a, a serious question. Um, when you, when you have an oil leak and you are a contractor, what is your duty to clean it up? That's the, that's the bigger question. Can we hold them accountable for cleanup? Or do we have to just live with, you know, because if, if it was a resident, you would just have to live with it, right? But if it's a business, doing business on behalf of the city, for the city, then essentially they have damaged the city for a lack of, um, upkeep, their vehicles. So maybe we can look at to see, um, what happens if it is a leak and it's determined, it doesn't matter what is, why it's a leak, whether it's coming from the engine or, you know, the, the trash itself, but they're responsible for it. So let's look into that to see, um, what, what would be the remedy.
We will do, we'll do that, Mayor, have Lucho and staff do a survey, and they'll find out the damage, and then we'll contact them, and we have a way, I think, in the contract to assess the fixing of that.
Also, um, thank you, Ms. Miller, for, um, bringing up the, um, the request for a three-way, um, sign at, um, 145th and Avis. I'm in favor of looking at that, um, situation, at that request, to see if it's not fitting for a three-way, um, sign. I want to thank the, um, you guys did the, um, you did the infield? The railroad track?
No, I think, I think. Oh, did you? Then we did it, I'm sorry. I've been in conversation. I, I've been in conversations with BSNF for months, and they're coming to install the final fix. But if you called it in, of course, we did it, and my apologies. Yeah, and we did it right, and we did it well. Yes.
Because you know, that's.
Thank you.
I walk that way every day.
Yeah.
Actually have noticed it. I did notice the, um, the, um, because a resident brought it to my attention, the, what you call it, the, the wood? You know, the.
The track?
Yeah, the wood, yeah.
The ties, railroad ties.
Yeah, yeah, I, I did notice it, that's in disrepair. So I don't know if, um, BNSF needs to repair it, or if they have repaired it, because I haven't been over there in a couple of days, um, or if we need to send it to the Public Utilities Commission to have, to compel them to repair it. Because as you drive through there, you, you feel it. A resident told me about it, so I walked over there and I said, well, yeah, it is like that. Um, when you, when you walk over, you, you can't really appreciate it, but when you drive, you definitely can appreciate it, you know? So if we can look into that, I appreciate it. And that's all I have. Yeah, one more thing? Okay.
And I just want to say to Randall, thank you for your, um, oral communication that was sent in. The one for oral communication, not the one that's on the agenda, but the firework, health and safety one.
Okay. All righty, let's move our agenda. We're on the, we're on the consent calendar. What is the pleasure of this body concerning this consent calendar?
If there's no subtraction additions, I make a motion to accept the consent, and Taylor has written.
I'll second that.
Okay, Madam City Clerk.
Do you want to call for discussion?
I'm sorry, say it again for me.
Do you want to call for any further discussion?
Yes, any further discussion? CNN with the council, please vote.
For the consent calendar, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we are on item H. This will be the consent calendar for the, the successor agency.
And again, I'll make a motion if there's no corrections, additions.
Motion's being made by, um, Pat Kearney.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Quavis. Any discussion on the motion? Will the council please vote?
For item number nine, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, well, item I, which is another consent calendar from the Landale Housing Authority, what is the pleasure of this body concerning?
Second.
It's been moved by, um, Kearney and seconded by Suarez. Any discussion on the motion? Will the council please vote?
For item number 10, motion passes unanimously.
Okay, um, thank you, Madam City Clerk. At this time, without objection, I'm going to move up item 15 before we hear, um, item J. Item 15 is the, um, east side of 147th traffic mitigation. Let's, let's hear this item first. Let's hear the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. In 2024, staff commissioned a roadway analysis report from Advanced Consulting Engineers for 147th Street from Hawthorne Boulevard to Prairie Avenue, that's the east side of 147, to address issues and concerns from residents to enhance the safety related to existing roadway features. That report was completed in August, um, 2024. The, uh, the report provides for road diet improvements. There's four alternatives called out in the report, and it also calls out for traffic circles, uh, possible locations as where, as well as curb, um, bulbous. Both the traffic circles and the curb bulbous will be implemented after a road diet, uh, project if desired. The, the report, uh, measured traffic of 4,195 cars in a 24-hour cycle, um, on that section of 147th Street. Only 2% of, 2.3% of vehicles, uh, were traveling above the posted speed, uh, limit, and that's between Hawthorne and Larch, which is, um, uh, on the, on the Hawthorne side of, of 147th Street. On the Prairie side of 147th Street, between Larch and Prairie Avenue, only less than half a percent of the vehicles were speeding. That, it's equivalent to about 12 cars out of the 4,000 cars that were, uh, going around there. The, a little bit about the speed limit, uh, on, um, 147th Street each side, is that it is set up at, uh, posted at 35 miles an hour. What is very interesting is that I have not located this on our traffic survey at the city. So I'm in the process to, um, address, uh, and request a new traffic, uh, survey for the city because we are also due for it, and we will really see what the speed should be here. In, in any event, 85% of the vehicles, um, when we did the report and the measurement, 26%, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, the 85% of the vehicles, uh, were traveling at 24 miles an hour, which justifies lowering this, this report, uh, um, the, the speed limit, I'm sorry, the speed limit on the street. However, 147th Street East is really separated in two sections. I've noticed in the report, people seems to, seem to be traveling, uh, faster on the Hawthorne end, between Hawthorne and Larch. And that portion, the 85% of the speed was measured at 31 miles an hour, which, uh, will not quite allow to lower it immediately now to 25 miles an hour if we chose to. The four alternatives suggested in the, uh, in the report are road, road diet, uh, with the common purpose of reducing the travel lanes between, uh, from four travel lanes to two travel lanes, and adding bicycle lanes and parking lanes. Two of the alternatives also call out for, uh, center two-way left-turn, uh, lane, and that's commonly known as the suicide lane in some, uh, street language, the center, uh, lane. Therefore, the, the report recommends alternative, uh, one or two. In, alternative one contains a two-lane, uh, I'm sorry, a center lane, uh, for left turns. Alternative two does not include that center lane. Therefore, staff was proposing alternative two as the solution. I would like to add at this point that alternative four is extremely similar, similar to alternative two. It does not contain a center, uh, turn lane. Therefore, it is one lane in each direction, with the difference between, between alternative two and four, that the bike lane on alternative four is immediate to the curb, away from the, passing traffic, right? Uh, the approximate cost to implement any of these alternatives is around $125,000 right now. And, uh, however, we need plans, uh, to be designed for about $10,000, uh, for either of the alternatives. An update on traffic circles and curb bulbous, um, because it was requested to try to implement something in, in a immediate, uh, as an immediate temporary solution. Staff has been, uh, requesting, uh, proposals from traffic engineers. We, we are collecting them, we're going to analyze them, and we'll come back, uh, with a report to council for the west side of, of 147, uh, including traffic, uh, circles, the speed camps, and, and other measures that they may propose. But the reports are, the, the proposals are not ready yet to, to implement that. And the, I do want to mention that the installation of, of, uh, traffic circles on, on any street, it's a full process. It requires to study the intersections, to install a temporary, uh, traffic circle. It's painted and it uses temporary, um, cones and, uh, and signage. Next step is to, for a traffic engineer to monitor this location, uh, receive comments from the public, and then there's a one or two, uh, town meetings to receive, um, open conversation from, from the residents about the pros and cons of, of this. And depending on the comments, we either move forward with installing the permanent traffic circles or not. At other jurisdictions, I've been part of the same process, and the permanent traffic circles were not recommended because of the negative, uh, responses received from, from the public. So just want to let you know that, and as soon as I have the information, I'll, I'll come forward to council. Schedule, if we do move forward with implementing a road diet, I want to remind council that each side of 147th Street is currently under the street moratorium because it was paved only four years ago. Our street moratorium. Our street moratorium goes for five years. However, the expiration of that on 147th Street is August of 2026. The west side of 147th Street is on street moratorium until August 2029. As recommendations, I do have to direct City Council, to direct staff to proceed with the design of an alternative road diet, either two or four. The second staff recommendation is changed a little bit now to, if we accept recommendation one, recommendation two will be to authorize Public Works to advertise for bids. And recommendation three is to follow up with a new speed survey for 147th Street. However, this is an update from today. I am going to move forward with a citywide traffic survey. However, for 147th Street, we will have to redo it if we do a road diet, so it will follow after the improvements. And that concludes my staff report, but I'm here if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you for the report. Let's hear from the city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank the director for a very thorough report and for mentioning some aspects of the west side of 147th as well. I would just like to ask the council, because Councilmember Cuevas lives within 500 feet of West 147th, if the council could please avoid discussing the west side. She has to recuse herself when that is being discussed. So in order to not get kind of hinky about what she needs to do or not do today, if we could focus today on the east side so that she can be fully involved. And then, you know, obviously, if you have individual questions for the director, please feel free to ask after the meeting. But if the council discussion could stay on east, I would greatly appreciate it.
Okay, you got it. Let's hear from Councilwoman Cuevas.
Thank you, Lucho, for your presentation. I have a couple of questions. I know speed is a major thing, but running stop signs, do we, is there any way we could, do we know how often they're running the stop signs? Was that studied, or was it just traffic?
It is not typical to study on one of these reports the people obeying the traffic signs. However, it is possible to do so, and then somebody counts. We videotape for 24 hours, and somebody counts the
How many cars?
How many cars are obeying or otherwise.
Okay. On alternative number four, putting the bike lanes on the inside, the parking, is that parallel, or is that a vertical parking? How would they be parking there?
It would be parallel parking. Instead of at the curb side, they will be after the
So it'll be after the two feet mark between the bike lanes? And then there's the two feet green lane or whatever color lane we put, and then there's the parking lane?
That is correct. And probably I should have explained that. In alternative four, there is a bike lane, a buffer zone of two feet, creating separation. There then comes the parallel parking lane, another two feet of buffer zone between the parking lane and the travel lane, and then it repeats, mirrors on the other side.
And the buffer between the parking and the bicycle, are we putting like little stands? Or is it just painted?
It is just painting for this. This is kind of typical, a typical layout, but it doesn't have a separation of cones or anything like that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Bernadette Suarez.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, yeah, my question was with regards to the funding. Have we reached out to the South Bay Cities Council Government? Because we're doing the LTN project. And from what I understand, Measure M has a lot of allocations usually to implement plans such as bike lanes and whatnot.
Thank you for the question. No, I have not reached out to them regarding this street. Our local travel network that is in process with, for Measure M funding. We selected 149th Street as the travel lane for, it's on the map as 149. But we could revise it, and then this could be built with funding for that.
Yeah, I think there were subsequent discussions at the council meeting to look at 147th and then to see if we could somehow use funds to help with the traffic calming. So we wanted to see if we could use that because the discussion was, is they travel too fast. We're a little scared to put bike lanes, not bike lanes, to have the network go through there. But then the discussion became out of meeting, I think. Can we look at 147th and possibly use funds? We can make the travel network go through there because they had suggested that originally. And then also kind of double dip and use some of the funds to help with possibly some of these items.
I can definitely contact them, and we can see that that application and those funds are probably at least six months away, if not one year. I'm not quite sure when they're making the decisions.
Okay, Councilmember Talavera.
Okay, yeah, I had a few questions. So I can see that the street is 60 feet wide, right? Looking at the diagrams here. So within those 60 feet, is there a legal requirement of the width of the travel lane? Or is it whatever we come up meeting to, what fits in those 60 feet?
I'll answer it because, so, under the Subdivision Map Act, there is dedication of right-of-ways. So whatever established the right-of-way in the beginning would have established that length. It is a Public Works right-of-way dedication, but it is, I guess you could say, created by a subdivision map act.
So I'm looking at the different diets here, and personally, I like diet four, alternative four. But I would like to see if there's a way to put a two-way turn lane in the center. So if we shorten the bike lane, because I see that in one, it's five feet wide, and then the other two is four, and then the last one is six. So is there a way to put alternative four and one together where we have a two-way left-turn lane in the center?
It is, it's unfortunately not one of the alternatives. However, it could be done. Anything we would like could be done.
So just within those 60 feet, we can determine the width of the bike lane and the street lane, the travel lane, and
Absolutely, the typical is 12-foot travel lanes. However, they go down to 10 depending on the dimensions of the streets.
Okay, thank you.
One more question. It designates it as a bike lane. But my question is, are other modes of transportation allowed to travel on it at certain speeds?
Yeah, it can be used for scooters and things of that sort, absolutely.
And to that same point, vehicles, if they need to, let's say if they're turning, they could go into the bike lane, right?
Correct, for turns, you can, using proper safety measures, you can go into the bike lanes, yeah, to turn.
To Frank's point, let's say instead of doing two left turn, one going east, one coming west, could there be one of those where it has the center, and you could use the same? I don't know if I'm explaining
Yes.
It's just one long medium, I guess.
That would be alternative, as an example only because it doesn't match directly what Councilmember Talavera was mentioning. But if you look at alternative one, the center lane, it's called a two-way left-turn lane. And that will be within double yellow striping. And this lane is exclusively for turning left at the corners and is for both directions. It's big enough for one car, but it's used for both directions.
And then if alternative one, we decide to go with that, could the bike lane be like a turn over there for? Or is that cutting it too tight?
I truly don't see why not. I just need to reach out to the designers and say, we want to put the bike lane next to the curb. And I don't see that as being an issue.
To me, the bike should go on the curb side because that way you don't have your parking cars coming in and out as you're riding your bike. You stay on the left of your bike.
I typically agree with that, but some cities, particularly LA, has where the cars park close to the curb, and then there's a bicycle lane that's next to the flow of traffic. Although I agree that that might be safer because if you need to, you can jump on the curb, right, if you're on your bicycle. But I'm not sure. So let me ask you this. So why would the city of LA, for instance, have it the other way around?
I think it's just more common because it's what I've seen before, even in our neighboring cities that are implementing bike lanes, they are matching alternative two. But I don't see why not. It is possible to move the bike lane next to the curb. I think it's a matter of preference.
Yeah, I mean, I would be reluctant to, like in LA, I'm reluctant to ride the lanes as they are because you're close to speeding traffic as opposed to, when you go down Hawthorne Boulevard, as you enter into the city of Hawthorne, there's a bike lane, right? It's next to the curb, which I use that, you know, a lot, you know, because you can easily, you just feel safer because you're next to a curb rather than a car that's parked, right? And then the cars is whisking by you.
When there's a car parked and I'm riding on the left of the car, I'm afraid they might not see me on the blind side, and they're going to pull out and take me with it.
Oh, yeah, cars just pulling out, yeah, yeah.
So that's why I feel safer if my bike lane is on the inside and the car's on the outside.
I see, okay.
You know, because we do have those blind lanes.
Yeah.
I mean, blind spots. So if you have a little scooter or something riding, you don't see them until they're right on you.
Yeah, that's true.
That's why my idea was, is to put the bike lane on the inside.
Next to the curb.
Next to the curb.
Okay. Let's see if any members of the public are going to speak on this item.
Hello, I'm Ryan. I'm Longdale resident and cyclist. And I wanted to comment about the suggested alternatives. And I think it's great that all four alternatives have a bike lane that's infrastructure where none existed before. Having said that, I would lean towards alternative two, three, and four over alternative one because those all have buffers on both sides of the bike lane. Alternative one places the bike lane directly next to the row of parked cars. And a driver who is just parked and opens their door, that's a hazard for cyclists. And the buffer helps avoid that. And alternative four goes further to avoid that by switching the bike lane and the parking lane. And I guess the takeaway is that buffers are really good. So consider two, three, and four. And that's basically it, so thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Yes, sir.
Hi there, my name is Andrew Blackney. I'm a resident of Longdale and a resident of this portion of 147th Street. I'd like to urge this body to consider the road design displayed in alternative four. I firmly believe this is by far the superior option for safety of all road users. Having parking-protected bike lanes provides a higher level of safety for bicyclists, putting them next to parked cars. I'm sure you're all aware that it takes one driver one second staring at their phone to veer into a cycle lane. And you can't do that when there's a parked car in the way. As a cyclist who has ridden 279 of the past 365 days down this street, I can say I'd feel a lot safer with a 2,000-pound barrier blocking a 2,000-pound moving vehicle at 25 miles an hour or faster from hitting me. And I'd also like to say that I would urge the city to also consider whatever option they do, adding in some flex posts there. Because with whatever option there is here, if there is a buffer that's painted, paint doesn't stop a driver from, let's say, parking in a bike lane and deciding that this is their parking spot now. So I'd like to urge you guys to consider that. And I'd also like to say that, once this is done, I still would like to urge the city to put in some traffic circles or bulbouts on these intersections as this is a physical implement that does stop people from ignoring those stop signs. And I think that that is a very big issue. I've done my own version of a traffic study, as Lucho said, recording video and watching people. I do it a little bit more fancy, I use AI for it. But about 15 to, maybe 17% of people are just completely ignoring those stop signs there. And so using a physical implement to stop them would tell them, hey, you need to stop here. If you don't stop, there's going to be some consequences for your actions. So just want to urge the city to consider that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Matthew Harbison again. My concern when we look at bike lanes ultimately is going to be who is supposed to be in them. Obviously, we don't want cars in them, but we are looking at an ever-present piece of e-bikes and other things that, the enforcement of who is riding these vehicles falls on various government bodies, whether it be the DMV, whether it be the Police Department, whether it be Public or Department of Safety, various things. I mean, for example, in the city of Longdale right now, on the way here, there were children, children, driving motorized vehicles, like a lawnmower engine, down Hawthorne Boulevard, on my way here. I mean, these were middle school at best. Are we going to be putting these children in motorized vehicles in these bike lanes? Are we cracking down on who's allowed in them or not in them? And so I just, while we make these bike lanes provisions, we need to be looking at who's going to be driving in these lanes and what are the safeguards that are going to be done for the people who are trying to stay safe doing things legally as opposed to as opposed to other people just looking for a route to cut in because they don't want to go down the main thoroughfares or something like that. And so, I don't know if there are special laws that are posted now that who can or can't be on these things. I do know that a recent friend of mine was in an accident while biking, and he was found to be 51% liable because he was on the sidewalk. Bicycles are meant to be on the street. And so when you say, oh, I can just move up on the curb, well technically, you're not supposed to do that. And so bicycles, if you hit somebody, the car was found 49% and the bicycle was found 51%. So, he was out of work, but it was his fault because he was riding on the sidewalk. And so that's just, as we develop these plans, as we start looking to see what is and isn't happening, I just wanna make sure that we're forward-thinking about what devices are going to be using our roads and how we're going to make sure that the people who need protection are given protection, how the people who are trying to get from one place to another safely are able to do that. And as a community, as a city, how we can be all on the same page and not have to tear up our newly-designed bike lanes in five years because we didn't think about something. So that's just my caution to all of us.
Okay, thank you for that input. Bernadette Suarez.
Yeah, I just was wondering why there isn't, like, why the buffer zone is just painted. Because I've been to, I was visiting families in Santa Ana, and the way they had is, they had little rise, I don't know what they're called, concrete that's risen, raised, I don't know how you say it, to separate the bike lane and the parking. So they had it where the bike lane was right next to the curb, and then there was the parking, parallel parking, and then two-way streets.
The, it's a matter of preference if we would like. And there are different types of classifications for bike lanes. The, we can ask for it during design and put cones. Or you're probably referring to the curb stops at the parking spaces, right? Something similar to that. We could look into doing all that as well. It's, if desired, we can implement everything.
And then the other point I wanna make is, I do want to look at this as part of the LTN. I think that we could offset the funds if we make the route that way and then ask the Measure M funds to pay for probably a lot of this.
Okay.
I have a question for you, Lucho. The moratorium on 147th, the east side, it expires on August of 2026. If we had this bill before 2026, then our contract with the asphalt company that did this would be void, correct? We would have no guarantee on the repair of that street.
If we do it before, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
The warranties expired already, it's only for the one year with the companies.
So the moratorium is for what then?
It's for us to protect the investment, for the city to keep it without holes and things like that.
Mayor, Council, the reason the moratorium's in effect is because utilities were coming in after we paved our roads and ripping them all up into pieces. So, the reason the policy's in place and the ordinance is to protect that from happening.
Okay, my other question is, I'd like to turn to four, but I'd like to see, like, Councilmember Talavera, a left turn lanes and number four. Does it have left turn lanes? With that, I'm done, Robert.
Okay. I have one follow-up question. So, in the report, it was recommended that we approve alternative two. Oh, did it say two or four?
They added, didn't you add four to it?
Yeah, I think you verbally said four.
Yeah.
Yes, verbally I said it, that we could pick, modify the recommendations to.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. My whole thing was, if there's a stop sign at every intersection, I was kinda questioning the need for a turning lane if they're supposed, well, they're supposed to be stopping at every section. But then I thought, I mean, I guess you could do that. And then could you also add, like, some kind of foliage in the middle to kinda stop? I just don't want people riding through the whole lane type thing, too. Like, the middle lane and then using that to, like, pass up between other cars, you know how people are. Because is there a way to also, if you do do that, maybe midway between the street, you know, have some kind of landscaping or something that would prevent them from trying to cut off other people?
We can look into that, however, that is not common. I have, I haven't seen, I, we could do a mini median if.
That's my only concern, is that if it's just a straight shot, people are gonna be using it to kind of cut off other people.
We could do a median every so often. But, and I will show you that when the design is, it's probably at 30% or something for us to look at. It could be implemented.
Okay. Talavera.
Okay, and to that, I was thinking the opposite, I think. As is, you know, how the traffic goes on that street, if someone is doing a left turn and they gotta wait, so will those cars behind them try to go around them? Or, so that's why I was advocating for the two-way turn, the two-way left turn. Which, but, you know, she brings up a good point, yeah. Because, unfortunately, the discussions that we're having all goes back to driver behavior, you know? If somehow we can get some automatic spikes or something, you know, to deter the drivers, you know? You know, I don't know, it's just, it's just a tough situation, because, you know, we're trying to improve the city, we're trying to get what we want, but there's always those rule-breakers that are gonna, they're gonna push the, push to break the rules. And, so how do we proceed? You know, like I said, my ideal was having the two-way, the two-way turn lane so that people in the back, and I haven't stood out there to watch the traffic. So those of you that haven't, if it's very trafficking, you know, a two-way lane, left turn lane would be useful. But if it's sporadic traffic and not really used, you know? So I'm, what I think I'm hearing most often from these conversations is, it's not the, and according to the report, everyone's, a large percentage is driving under the speed limit. So it's not about speeding, it's about not stopping, right? So, that's the question, that's the dilemma that we have. So, um. Yeah, let's hear the expert.
I think you're, I think you're right. Let's hear from Lieutenant Osborne.
I wanna add one thing. So, speaking on the center median, so if traffic's backed up and you have the parking lane, what you have to remember is, if my units have to respond quickly, if the center median is there, there is nowhere for them to go. Your fire department and your sheriff's black and whites will not be able to get through. If that center median's open, they could use that with their lights and sirens to make through. So just keep that in mind, too. The more you block off, the harder it is for us to maneuver around. Because typically what people are supposed to do is pull to the right, but they won't be able to pull to the right anymore because of the parking lane. Just FYI.
Okay, that's a good point.
And then Mayor, Council, I want to add, whatever the council decides on the buffer lane, if you do a raised median curbing, we'll have to work with public works, because I don't know how we'll do street sweeping in that area. So that's another thing I wanted to point out to you on the, that's a potential issue. Street sweeping and how we get in there, because that area could build up with trash and debris.
All right.
Give everybody, every homeowner a broom.
You gotta break out with your broom.
So what is, yeah, so what is the pleasure of this body concerning this proposal?
I, sorry. I'm okay with looking at four, looking at the median lane, you know, due to maybe public safety. And then also trying to implement this into the LTN. That way we can have potential funds for this. And then exploring this option.
Okay, let's divide that. Let's do the last part, let's make that separate. Because what's on the agenda today is not the funding mechanism. It's the.
Design.
The design. So let's adopt the design proportion and then give instructions for the staff to make it part of the local travel network for funding purposes. But let me ask the city attorney, is it proper?
Mr. Mayor, you actually, you gave the answer I would have given, which is that the motion would be to select a design to start that process. When the design comes back, the city manager and his team will do a SEQA study of the design as well, because there's gonna be some environmental impacts from whatever design is picked. It wasn't, didn't have to do SEQA before tonight, because you had multiple designs, you were trying to figure out which one you needed to study. With respect to funding, that should also come back. They should look into it, but that would be, like you said, Mr. Mayor, that's direction to staff as opposed to a decision as to which design to go down, because they can certainly take those actions, look into it, and then bring back a report for ultimate approval by the council or not approval. I'm not gonna tell you what to do. But that decision should be made later. That should just be consensus direction to go investigate and bring that back.
Okay, you understand.
Then I give that direction and I pick option four and also add, look at adding the middle lane for the turning.
Thank you.
Or for public safety.
Is that your motion? Okay. Is there any, I'm second.
I'll second after nobody wants to speak.
So to clarify, we're doing, we're choosing four with option one, middle, two-way, left turn?
Yes. That's what I understand.
But what are we shortening?
Is that your understanding?
We're shortening the.
I think, ma'am, what will probably need to be done is figuring out between the parking lane and the bike lane, what can be shortened. I think the engineers are gonna have to look at the fact that the bike lane is up against the curb, and so, how much can it be shortened? Parking lane generally can't go below seven feet, but that's gonna be for people a lot smarter than me to design and bring back to you what those options would be.
Okay.
So if it's with trying to get the two-way thing, I'll second that.
Okay, so the motion's been made by Bernadette Suarez that we adopt alternative four with the additions that we spoke of, seconded by Mr. Pat Kearney. Is there any discussion on the motion? Would the council please vote?
For item number 15, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we're on item J. This is a public hearing of the city council, the successor agency, and the Longdale Housing Authority. Let's have the staff report.
Good evening, mayor and council. So this is the budget workshop for fiscal year '25, '26.
Okay.
All right. So budget workshop, '25, '26. There we go. So start with, we'll go over general fund revenue. These are the major sources of our general fund revenue. You can see taxes, license permits.
One second, Mr. Mayor. I wanna order, I would like to see this continued, because three other members have not had time to review the budget. So I feel it's only fair to have Councilman Talavera, Councilwoman Cuevas, and Mayor Robert LaMiles to review the total package, not just the highlights.
Okay.
How long do we have to adopt?
We can, I'll, you asked him till the 19th, or whatever.
Mayor, the mayor council, the next meeting would be, I think, the first meeting in June. Is that correct, Yvette?
The second.
June 2nd, so I'd give the council and the mayor additional time to review, since it came out short and then the entire council was at a training. So, it might be a good idea to allow two more weeks for input and comments for the public as well as for the council. And then submit your, and then we come back and bring it in two weeks. We'll still make our, we'll still have it done on time. It's subject to the purview of the council.
Okay, agreed.
So that will, because it's a public hearing, that will actually take a motion to continue it, the item to the date certain of June 2nd, and a second on that motion, and then a vote.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, the motion's been made by Suarez that we continue this public hearing.
I'll second it.
I was gonna say the date. What's the date certain?
June 2nd.
Until June 2nd. And seconded by Mr. Pat Kearney. Is there any discussion on the motion? Would the council please vote?
For item number 11, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, item 12 is also a public hearing to extend the urgency ordinance regarding the Longdale Municipal Code regarding the housing opportunity overlay zone. Let's have the staff report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. Good evening, council members. The item before you is an extension of an urgency ordinance. On April 7th, the council held a public hearing and approved an urgency ordinance, which lasts 45 days to amend the Longdale Municipal Code establishing the housing opportunity overlay zone and rezoning various properties throughout the city into the zone. The council also determined a SEQA exemption. Council also directed staff to adopt the regular ordinance. And a public hearing was held and the planning commission did adopt a resolution recommending that the city council adopt a regular ordinance for the rezone and the establishment of the housing opportunity overlay zone. The staff report provides a series of exhibits and documentation on why this was an urgency. Staff received a letter from HCD. Staff responded by adopt or recommending that the council adopt an urgency ordinance. By adopting the urgency ordinance for 45 days, that gave staff some time to go through the various process in order to establish a regular ordinance. Once the regular ordinance is expected to take effect in late July, it's my understanding that the urgency ordinance will go away because the regular ordinance will supersede it. Because it's, that's the intent of our urgency ordinance, to be temporary until a permanent fix is allowed. Staff is available to answer any questions. There's information that some of the milestones that staff and the council achieved and then the remaining tasks. The remaining task is that, on June 2nd, the city council will have the second reading of the regular ordinance. The ordinance will take effect 30 days after that. And then we will send a, the regular ordinance to HCD's records so that they know that we followed and implemented Program 9 of the housing element. So, the urgency ordinance is exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15183. It's pursuant to a existing general plan. It is a public hearing. Staff recommends opening up a public hearing. And the required recommendation, or the recommendation is, conduct a public hearing, SEQA exemption, and because it's an urgency ordinance, adopt by a 4/5 vote of the city council. Staff is available to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions of the staff before we open the public hearing? Okay, CNN, it is 7:59, the public hearing is now open. Is there any wishing to provide? Is there any wishing to provide comments during this public hearing? CNN, it is still 7:59, this public hearing is closed. Let's bring up the diocese for any comments from the council. Any discussion by the council?
If there isn't any discussion, I will stack a relation. Let me read it. To conduct a public hearing, determine urgency ordinance number 1210-25, exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, AKA SEQA, print to Section 15183 of the SEQA guidelines, and to adopt four-fifths vote of the city council for the extension of the urgency ordinance, number 1210-25.
Okay, so that's your motion, is there a second on the motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Quavis, any discussion on the motion? Okay, this requires a four-fifths to pass?
For item number 12, the motion passes unanimously.
Let's move to item 13, a resolution for SB 1.
Good evening again, mayor and council members. On April of 2017, governors signed a Senate bill, SB 1, which is known as the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. Basically, this is to address road maintenance and rehabilitation, and they provide funding annually to the city. In order to accept these funds, city council needs to sign this resolution, 2505-022. The funds coming in this year to the city for fiscal year 2025-26, it's $833,753, and these are to be used for a street repairs project, we're planning to use it for the 2025-26 fiscal year, a street improvement project. That concludes my report. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Okay, what is the pleasure of this body concerning this item?
I'll motion to approve, or adopt, resolution CC2505-022.
Very good.
And I'll second that.
Motion has been made by Quavis, that we adopt such resolution as mentioned, and seconded by Talavera. Any discussion on the motion? Will the council please vote?
For item number 13, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, let's move on to 14, consider approval of a mobile recreation program in the community service department. Let's have the staff report.
Good evening, mayor and council, Jason Mender, community services director. The item before you is for the consideration of the approval of a mobile recreation program for the community services department. One of the key elements of a mobile recreation program is having a vehicle with which you can travel around the city from park to park, or even outside of parks, to create recreational programming opportunities in the community. This is especially valuable in cities that are park poor, or may have neighborhoods that aren't easily accessible for the community to get to parks. The good thing about our department, we do have a van that's already available and won't require that startup cost. Some of the other highlights for mobile recreation programs are they can go to any city park, they can go to any school park, other locations, including school sites, if we want to support school district-related events, or city special events, like the concerts, things like that, they can come and support. The van is basically a roller, rolling advertisement, as you can see, there are some attachments of what some sample wraps might look like. I did throw together kind of a design that we could potentially use, but I will leave it to a professional graphic designer to design something, you know, a little better. But the wrap costs are also included in the staff report. Some of the other cool things about it, or some of the other things that I, you know, the council can consider, would be just a weekday-only program, you can also do a weekend-only program, decide whether or not you want to support special events. The estimated cost for staffing, I do recommend that we have a senior rec leader that would be responsible for the program, can help manage the staff and drive the vehicle, and then finally, it would be very responsive unit that can basically take a poll for what the different residents in the communities want, and be very responsive to that. The more we accumulate activities, supplies, equipment, we can kind of tailor each to the different neighborhoods that the unit is able to go to. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm here to answer any questions the council may have.
Mayor, council, before you get going, I just wanted to bring this up too, this is an alternative to, you know, putting staff just at parks, which we tried that before, so council asked us to, a few, a couple council members asked us to bring an item, Jason put something together for programming for the parks, rather than just having staff sit at the parks, this is an alternative to that. So that's why Jason put this together for your consideration as well. Thank you.
Let's have some discussion on this item. Let's hear from Bernadette Suarez, followed by Frank Talavera.
Oh yeah, we heard a little bit about this in the budget subcommittee meeting, and I thought it was a great idea. I don't think that we offer a lot of activities, and that's been a complaint that I've heard from several residents, and so I think this would be, I think this is a great idea, I think it hits two points, and so I'm in favor of looking at this and seeing how we can implement it into the budget.
Okay, Frank Talavera.
Okay, I just want to say that I really love this project, and I just want to know if, in the future, do you, how do you, what plans are to expand it more than just one van?
There are cities out there that have fleets of three to four vehicles, I think the ideal vehicle might be like a box truck with a ramp, you know, almost like a U-Haul type thing, where you can roll things in and out. A lot depends on what the needs of the community are. Our city parks are relatively small, which limits some of the bigger events that can happen, but if we were to expand recreation programming to other special events, like movies in the park, things like that, then the vehicle shows up, everybody sees it, they know to come over, there's a variety of games, activities, whether it's arts and crafts-related programming, sports-related programming, music, whatever it might be, you know, hopefully the community will help dictate how we build the program, you know, with your body's approval, and, you know, we would put one unit into programming, we would see what the success rate was, and see if, you know, if other units were required by the community, or wanted by the community.
Let's hear from Shirley Quavis, councilwoman.
Pat is before me.
Pat is definitely before you, he's number one.
He's number one.
Going that way, and you too.
I do love this idea, but I'd like to see it for six days, I don't think Sunday we need to do it, you know, Sunday's a family day, it used to be a family day, but I'd like to see it go six days, Monday through Saturday. I like the idea, I think it's great.
Quavis?
I really like this idea, thank you for bringing it up to us. As far as feedback, did we ask the Yak group for their feedback, are they going to be involved in this, in planning different activities? And how many staff members are we looking, or is it just?
Two.
A couple of, because you're going to need more than two.
Depending on the number of days, anytime the unit was out, we would have a minimum of two, so ideally it would be a senior rec leader and a rec leader. If we found the demand from the public was greater, and we had more kids than the two staff could accommodate, then we would look to add additional recreation leaders, provided we have safe space in the van for them to travel. One of the things you asked about the youth advisory committee, we haven't brought them, this to them yet, if it comes to actual programming, we can definitely take it before them to get their feedback. One of the things that is really important about a program like this is marketing, and making sure that the public is aware of it, that we have a dedicated webpage that people can go to, or bookmark, whatever, say, hey, where's it going to be today, is it coming to my neighborhood, kind of like Santa Slay does, where so the neighbors know, hey, on Mondays, it's going to be at the park near me. So having a marketing plan, having a website, using Instagram and our cable TV team to help promote it, you know, it would be something that is helpful in generating, you know, feedback from the community, whether they respond through social media or posts, or, you know, are able to give us feedback onsite. But I think marketing, using the youth advisory committee to assist with that marketing, I think both of those would be great opportunities for a program like this.
And you'll always come back to us, let's say we adopt this, and tell you go four, you'll come back to us if you need more staffing, because I don't want to start something and then we're understaffed, and we'll get the complaint from the residents. You know, it's a great program, but you guys didn't have enough staff.
Well, in a city with three city-owned parks, and the three school sites, that's only six, and with five days of the week, we would be rotating through the one unit, there are cities out there with, you know, 20 to 30 parks with one unit, that, you know, you might get there once a month. So ideally, yes, we have success with the program, you know, with one van, and then we can look at what cost would be for, you know, a second vehicle, you know, obviously vans could cost 30, 40, $50,000, depending on, you know, how that goes. I think the other question you asked about staff, so if there's two in the van at all times, we would probably need four or five to kind of rotate through, cover sick days, things like that, and then those staff could be, you know, on our team to help with other events, or, you know, we pull people from other programs to help, but kind of rotate them through. Ideally, we have a dedicated staff just for mobile rec, you know, when it comes to the safety and the ability to communicate well, and work with the public in an outdoor environment, you know, we can show up to support block parties, you know, any events that are out there, have the van roll up and be ready to mobilize.
Thank you.
You know, I like this program, and one of the cities that you're speaking of is the city of Inglewood, I know they have a similar program, I don't know how many vans they have, but I know they have at least one, and they have several parks, and it rotates throughout the parks, and they take it on the road when they have community events as well, you know, they carve out a little portion of the venue for the, of the community event, whether it's a concert in the park, or what have you, and it works out pretty well. And so I am excited about this program. Yeah, Landale, I see your markup here, that's pretty, that's pretty cool, Landale Mobile Recreation, Parks Make Life, is that better?
That's the CPR slogan, the Parks Make Life Better.
Yeah. That's pretty cool.
I have a couple other ideas, I'm not going to throw them out there yet, I wanted to gauge the feedback that we got.
Well, let's hear those other ideas, not tonight.
Not tonight.
Let's look at those other ideas, to see if you can up the ante. Right, but in general, I like the direction this is going. Let's hear from the member of the public.
Good evening again, Matthew Harbison. My question with projects like this is the funding, and from that funding, what are the possibilities of donations or other things? And I bring that to mind, because in the past, I had asked about some potential donations to the Harold Hoffman Community Center for creating sponsorship for some of the programs that were being offered. But at the time, I was met with resistance, because it was something about money would have to go into certain accounts, it would have to have a minimum balance, it'd have to have guaranteed money in over a period of time. There was, basically, we're not equipped to handle it at the moment, this is when they were having the classes, this was right after when the, it reopened to have classes, because there was a while it was shut down, and because there were some kids trying to participate in activities, and they couldn't because of some financial means, and so I was looking to see how could that be done, and basically, outside funding had to go through special accounts and stuff. So I'm just curious, is there an opportunity for donations, outside funding, grants, or even just members of the public making donations to this, or is this having to go into the general fund, and then potentially could be siphoned away somewhere else? And so, I mean, obviously, we've got a budget thing that didn't get looked at tonight, so maybe re-corporate, I'm not sure, but I'm just, as far as funding is concerned, is this coming out of general, is this money that's already set aside, and can there be money from outside the city budget coming in to help with that, without crossing any lines, red tape, or things like that? So I'm just, where does the money coming from, and can extra money be coming into it, outside of whatever the funds were initially scheduled for?
Okay, thank you. You want to continue?
I've completed my presentation, I think, working with the finance director on putting an actual budget together based on the direction tonight, so that it can get rolled into the city budget. It will take, you know, a little while to recruit the staff, it'd be great, you know, the sooner that we can get them on board and ready to go, but I would anticipate, you know, a few months in order to actually launch the program.
Let's hear from Councilman Suarez.
Yeah, this is probably more of a question for the city attorney, there's a city, is it La Puente, I think, they actually have a nonprofit, and from what I understand, the nonprofit raises money to put on events and whatnot, I don't know how they configured it, but I don't know if that's, you know, somewhat of a park fund, or an activity, I don't know if it's a possibility, I know they do it, I don't know how they do it, but maybe that's something we could look into at the very least.
Sure, I've actually been looking into that for another city that I work with, and I'll be happy to share some of that information with the council outside the meeting, and then if there's interest in bringing it back for this, or other things, we'll certainly talk about it at the meeting, or at a future meeting. One thing to know is that you can set up a nonprofit fairly quickly, but to get a 501(c)(3) status, where there would be tax benefits to donors, takes generally between two and three years. So setting it up, it would wind up, it would wind up having to be something that the city really still carries for a while, unless you had entities that were willing to make donations that were not tax deductible, until you really got that 501(c)(3) status. But certainly something I can look at, and without breaking the Brown Act, I'll get you more information offline.
Thank you.
And you might want to check out the city of Carson, I think they have one as well. Let's hear from Pat Kearney.
I guess there's a question for you again, city attorney, what about donations? Can a nonprofit donate to, I think you need, and here is equipment supplies, $5,000, can they make a donation just to buy that supplies?
Sure, I'm happy to look at that, I haven't dealt with that issue directly, from what the gentleman said, it sounds like a portion of that was the practical impacts of the city tracking that, so that will be both a legal answer and sort of a practical administrative answer, but I'll get you the legal side of it.
Okay, thank you.
Shirley Quavis?
Talking about funds, parks and recs, they have a small amount of fund in there, are we able to use those funds towards the event?
I think we're.
Is that something they would like to do?
We're always going to be strategic in the equipment that we can buy, if we can use it for different areas, obviously, some of our equipment we've used to support National Night Out, we'll use it up in the senior lunch program, you know, we've tried to be very, you know, multipurpose whatever we buy, so, you know, we might be able to save a little bit of money if we don't allocate the full 5,000. The vehicle maintenance costs, right now, those are allocated for other vehicles, so we would just want to make sure that we kept up the maintenance of the vehicle, because without the van, we have no mobile portion of the program. But we'll, yeah, we would be strategic as much as possible with the funding that was allocated to the program, and into other program.
Okay, what is the pleasure of this body concerning?
Well, Mr. Mayor, if there's no further questions, I would strongly recommend approval of the mobile recreation program, the community services.
Okay, so the motion's been made that we approve the mobile recreation program in the community service department.
I'll second that.
And seconded by Quavis. Any discussion on the motion? Will the council please vote?
For item number 14, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. City managers report.
Thank you, mayor, council, I'll be brief, so we went to, thank you for going to the contract cities, had a good time there, learned a lot from a lot of the different speakers there, it was interesting, it was interesting to see the dichotomy between the county and district attorney's office, and the board of supervisors, so that was interesting, and one topic of concern is the county jail, potentially closing, so I just, you know, that's something that we're scheduling a tour for the council, so be on the lookout for that. The other thing that I wanted to bring up, the Memorial Day event this coming Monday, so I want to invite the public and the community out to the memorial. invite the public and the community out to the Memorial Day event. We'll have it right here, out here in the quad, or at the memorial, the memorial monument outside of City Hall on the east side. And then one final thing I wanted to bring up to the councils for consideration, and something down the road that we can talk about. We are, I just want the council, thank you for your patience. We are working on all the items. There is a litany, a plethora of items to do. I sent you all a list of those items. We'll be updating those at our CMT meetings weekly, and I'll send an update to you guys, so you know where they're at. So we're trying to keep track. But there is a couple pages of items of to-do lists that you guys have provided to us, and we're working through that. So thank you for your patience. Thank you.
A litany and a plethora. Those are good words. Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Items from council members. Item 16, a further discussion on establishing an annual festival recognizing Hispanic American contribution to the community and the creation of an ad hoc subcommittee. Let's have the staff report.
Mr. Mayor, this item was continued to this meeting so that my office could look at the legal question of whether by implementing this type of festival, the city would take on legal liability or legal requirements. The answer briefly is no. The city would not. Cities and all government agencies have a duty to make events and programs open to people equally, but do not have a duty to provide equal programming for any or all groups living in the city or doing business in the city. The city can pick and choose. So this becomes truly a matter of responsiveness to your citizenry. As long as all people are invited, all people are allowed to attend, there is no legal issue here. With that said, if during your discussions, something comes up that sounds like a legal issue, I'll weigh in. Otherwise, this becomes a purely policy matter, and I leave it to the five of you.
Okay. Thank you for that, Mr. City Attorney. So when we left off two minutes ago, I guess we was discussing whether to have an expanded heritage festival solely, or to have a multicultural event. Let's pick up on that discussion. Mr. Pat Kearney.
I think what the city attorney said, I believe we'd have to go multicultural.
No, he didn't, he didn't, he didn't say that.
I mean?
He, that's not what he was saying.
But he said having a strictly one group?
If, the most recent cases involved cities that had events that were only open to people of one culture. So you can have an event that celebrates a culture as long as the event is open to anyone who wishes to attend. And then that, as I say, really makes it a matter of policy and a matter of responsiveness. As long as the gates are open for everyone, then it really is the council and city staff responding to your community to see what it is that your community wants and what you feel is appropriate for your community. So.
Shirley Cuevas.
Are we looking to do this this year? Because I'm reading that it's not in the budget. So if it's not in the budget, are we adding it? And how much are we adding to our current budget? Or is this going to be for next year?
Mayor, Council, I can answer that. So the budget hasn't been adopted, and we, the council can obviously add an additional event, but, or look at another event and change it out to rename it. So, and that, the next two, well, the ones already been set, it'll be coming up in the end of June, so before the end of fiscal year. But the next event would be the Jazz Festival, or the Blues, the Blues, sorry. I always make, it used to be called the Jazz and Blues Festival. So that would be the one that if you guys were looking at, making whatever you decide to do tonight, making it that might be an opportunity before the budgets adopt it, because the ad hoc work with staff, and we have that already outlined. But if that's somewhere you guys want to add in, that could be a possibility.
I mean, we already started, did we start advertising the Blues Festival? Do we have the bands? Because if we're going to change it, and we already have
No.
We haven't started on that.
We have not committed anything to the September 13 concert.
Okay. And then if we decide to do that and this festival, do we know approximately how much, would it cost the same as the Blues Festival?
So far, the two, the concert that we have at the end of June, and then the September concert, both have similar budgets. So I believe we could do, if you want it, what's the expectation level for the event? If it's a multicultural festival, bringing in six different types of bands, that's going to increase the cost as compared to doing a concert with three or four bands, shorter sets. So
So we could estimate about the same as the Blues?
Based on how much of a multicultural festival you would want. But yes, we would shoot to do it for roughly the same cost, as long as there weren't any requests outside of it. Like if you want six bands, we can't do it for the same amount.
Right. Thank you.
Talavir.
Okay. I'm going to ask you to indulge me for a few minutes, because I wanted to make sure I get my point across, and the rationale why I'm advocating for the National Hispanic Heritage Month Festival. Okay, so I wrote some thoughts down, and I wanted to stay calm and not get nervous, and make sure that I say everything that I have to say. So at the last council meeting, I thought that an honest and heartfelt attempt to establish a cultural festival for our city, because as of this day, we don't, we don't have a cultural festival. Okay? I thought it would be a great idea that would bring us together as a community. But a certain, a certain individual through social media has made this out to be divisive, discriminatory, and in my opinion, has distorted and misrepresented everything that was discussed at the last two council meetings. Okay? I respect that everyone has a right to express their own opinion, but when what is said is not truthful and factual, then I have to stand up and say, and show, so what is a lie and what's a misrepresentation that's trying to divide our community? So while concerns about equity and inclusivity are valid and necessary in public policy, the proposal that I made to establish Hispanic Heritage Festival in Landale deserves consideration on its own merits. While concerns, okay, the demographic reality of approximately 61% of Landale's population identifies as Hispanic provides a strong cultural and civic basis for such an event. Recognizing and celebrating the contributions of the city's majority demographic does not inherently diminish or exclude other groups. Never did I express to exclude any group based on their cultural race, ethnicity, or gender. That wasn't even a part of our discussion. Okay? But someone has turned, you know, distorted the truth, saying that I'm trying to exclude people. I'm not. But having a Hispanic Heritage Festival can instead be viewed as a step toward increasing cultural visibility and civic pride among a large portion of our population. First, Hispanic Heritage Month is nationally recognized observance, formally separated, formally celebrated from September 15 to October 15. Landale aligning a festival with this nationally acknowledged timeframe is consistent with cultural celebrations held in other US cities and serves to amplify the city's connection to national history and tradition. Many communities have events focused on particular heritage months, such as Black History Month, Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, without those events being considered exclusionary or discriminatory. Second, cultural representation and celebration are not zero-sum activities. Creating a Hispanic Heritage event now does not preclude future development of other festivals representing additional cultural groups. So if we have a Hispanic, a Hispanic Heritage Festival, that doesn't mean that other groups don't have that same right. So it's, it's a, it's a zero-sum activity. And we're not, and if we have this, if we have this activity, this festival, it's not taken away from any other group. Okay? So we're not trying to isolate a group and say we're better, we're not doing, that, a festival like that doesn't do that. Okay? But it brings us together. Okay? Cities often expand their cultural programming over time, riding, starting with larger demographic groups due to higher levels of interest, existing infrastructure, and cultural momentum. So that was one of the points that Jason just brought up, I think, you know, is, you know, so I don't think we're going to have a, maybe a certain group when we know our population, maybe we only have five residents of that culture. So why would we have, why would we have that type of a festival, knowing that, you know, even though we're not excluding, maybe no one's interested in that. So I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to use our demographics as the Hispanic National Festival to make sure that we have a successful festival. I think one of the observations that we've made over time with the Blues Festival is that maybe at one time, there was three 500, 600 people attending. But now, those that, those of us that have attended know that it's dwindled down considerably. So is that still, and talking about budget, is that still something feasible that we should be doing? So, so I think if we start with our greatest population or demographics, then maybe we get them all out here, and we'll, you know, grow our community. Okay? This is a pragmatic, pragmatic approach that allows a city to build support and structure gradually while remaining open to future inclusivity. Now, is there another group that we can champion, another culture, another activity? Again, you know, yeah, absolutely. So this is just the beginning of something great, something new for our city. Okay? So the concern that I'm pushing a pet project, as someone said, disregards the representative nature of local governance. As an elected official, all of us are tasked with advocating for the interests of our constituents. Okay? I'm fulfilling my duty by addressing cultural and civic interests by a majority population of our city. So it's not a pet project. It's not something that I'm going to have done. You know, I'm trying to just look at the demographics that we have and say, hey, this could be successful. This could be great. And this can be the, this could be something that opens the door. So regarding the argument that the public funds should be used for multicultural events to avoid discrimination, public events regularly cater to specific populations based on age, tradition, or interest. We have the Youth Day Parade. There's a memorial event that we're going to have. Some cities have MLK Junior parades. There's no, there's no discrimination in that. You know, that's something that has to be celebrated. So targeted programming is not inherently exclusionary unless other groups are actively denied equal opportunity to be represented or supported. So a Hispanic Heritage Festival does not deny other communities the ability to propose or celebrate their heritage. It merely initiates cultural recognition for a community that with significant historical and current presence in Landale. Finally, framing this as an issue of segregation overextends the legal analogy. Commemorating heritage and history are not equivalent to enforced separation or denial of services. The legal cases reference Mendez versus Westminster, which was in the app, a similar case approved that addressed systemic exclusion and unequal access. That's not what this is about. This is about allowing everyone in our community to participate. We're not saying, and I'm not advocating that this be a Hispanic only, and if you, if you're not from one of the 21 speaking, Spanish-speaking countries, you're not allowed, you're not allowed to come. No. But this is a major group in our city, and this is where we can begin with, thinking that since it's the major group in our city, we'll have a better response. That's what I'm saying. Rather than viewing the festival an exclusive act, it should be embraced as a positive community-building opportunity to highlight the diverse cultural roots that shapes Landale. Other groups are equally welcome to propose and participate in future heritage events as funding and community interests allow. So I was going to address the, the post that somebody from, a resident from here put on the social media, but I think you guys get, get the flavor of what I'm trying to say. Okay? And I appreciate your questions also, because when, when council member Cuevas and Suarez made the, made the questions about legality, you reminded me of a principal of a school. The principal really only has two jobs, to make sure, number one, that the students are safe, and to protect the district from liability. So thank you for doing your job. Okay? And I appreciate that. Okay? But as our attorney said, you know, if we're not excluding anybody, it's safe to go. Okay? And, and I'm advocating for National Hispanic Heritage Month, you know, not multicultural. Okay? Because we, I feel like, again, the example that I gave last time is, today we have a proclamation for who? For public works. Are they city employees? Absolutely. Last time we had a proclamation for? City clerk. Well, why didn't we just make one big giant proclamation and say, we proclaim the month of May, City Employee Month? But we took the, the effort to define right now, one group, then another group. And I know there's more than two departments in the city, so I'm hopefully, hopefully thinking that we're going to go to a different, to another group, because we want to honor and recognize every employee in our city. Okay? Further down, I think in, in the month, there, there's going to be a citywide employee recognition lunch. Is that true?
That's correct, Mayor and Council.
Okay. So, so we're not, and we're not going to say, well, you know what, city clerks, we already honored you, so you're, you're not invited. Stay at your desk. No. Okay? So, and we would do this because we want to honor everybody. We want everyone to be included. And for being National Hispanic Month, like I said, in, in my mind, I'm not thinking of mariachi, and I'm not thinking of folclorico, which are Mexican usually. And, and just that. I'm thinking of Salvadorian, I'm thinking of Guatemalan, I'm thinking of Ecuador, Panama, any other Spanish-speaking country that may be part of our community. You know, we have, look at, look at the businesses that we have. We have the Peruvian restaurant, Pollo Inca. We have the Ecuadorian restaurant, right here on 147th, right? We have the Salvadorian restaurant, La Bamba, right over there. We have Pollo Campero, which is Guatemalan. Okay? So, so we have different, different representations. Okay? And through the ad hoc committee, you know, I, I want to help that, my, my, my opinion for that would be to be inclusive of all those different groups. I don't want to just see a mariachi and a folclorico group there. You know, and if you know a performer that is, that's Hispanic and can, and maybe do it pro bono, even better. But, and when we talk about budget, which is something we should, but I'm thinking that let's not put the cart before the horse, and say, oh, we can't, because there's no money. Well, I mean, you look at a Latino family, if there's girls in the family and they're turning 15, they have their quinceañera. They may be, they may be as poor as possible. But what do they do to make that quinceañera happen? They don't look at their checkbook and say, I'm sorry, sorry, mi hija, we can't do nothing for you. I mean, they'll get a padrino, and if we need to get some padrino sponsors, of which I already have like two or three when I went to Contract Cities. Okay? So we, I mean, right now, I'm not even thinking about budget. Because if we, if we can direct through this, this association, through the ad hoc committee, and ask Jason to, to seek out sponsors for our event, that's one way of paying for it. You know, I'm, I, with the conversations that I have, I find out that county supervisors cannot directly donate to a governmental agency, but they can work through a nonprofit and, and bring that money into us. So I just want you guys all to be on board, and just be happy. So, um, I just want you guys all to be on board and just be happy. I'm always happy.
Thank you, Pat.
Okay, are you?
I'm finished.
Are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that, I appreciate that. Let's hear from Councilwoman Suarez.
Okay, thank you, and I appreciate, you know, explaining the intent behind it. My thing is, has to do more with the money, because, I mean, you made a comment, and I don't think it was, you know, about what if there's a demographic that has a low constituency, you know, I don't think, you know, we're going to throw an event for that. My, my only issue with, with something like that is that when you, when it comes to city funds, I think everybody pays a certain amount into the city fund, and I think that, that gives, you know, everybody, no matter how small the population, should have somewhat of a voice. And so for me, I'm okay with the event. My whole thing, though, is what funds are being used. If it's all outside money being funded, I have no problem, since that's not directly taken from taxpayer dollars. My only thing, and I've had a lot, I think Shirley and Robert brought up some really good points, so for me, it's more of a funding thing. If it's not used through general funds, because that's taxpayer dollars, I think everybody should have their, you know, a chance to, to have something, and if we do it through alternative way of finding, seeking funding where it's not directly impacting the budget, you know, I think that's fine. And I think through private partnerships, you know, and I know too, we both sat with Asmoa and talked to them, and they're, you know, they're a great resource for our city to bring activities. And so with that, as long as it's through that way, I'm okay with it. I don't necessarily want us to just cut the Blues Festival. For me, I don't think that leaves a good impression of cutting one to fund another, even if the activity starts dying down. I think we should look at it with an approach of, okay, how is it, how is the, the festival performing? But I'm not necessarily in favor of just cutting one to fund the other. I don't think that leaves a very, then you have people associating, you know, one with, with that. That being said, I'm okay with it as long as you are able to find maybe outside funding to sponsor the event through private partnerships.
Well, that, that's why, if you've noticed these last three meetings, the first meeting, I talked about the Blues, but since that, I have not talked about the Blues. So if we keep it, that's fine with me, but I'm proposing that we find a way then to continue another festival that's cultural.
Okay, go ahead.
I hear what you're saying about general funds, but the Blues Festival, we are using general funds. And like, if the statistics that Frank is giving us, which is 62% Hispanic, that means they're putting into the general fund. So we should see if there's any way of adding it or using some of our general funds for the event. But I also would like to see this year and get an idea of how many residents, Longdale residents are coming to our Blues Festival. Because ever since I've been attending the Blues Festival, most of the attendance comes from Redondo Hawthorne, they're not 100% Longdale residents. And I don't know if there's a way to do a survey or get an idea. I'm, I'm not saying let's get rid of the Blues Festival, but I would like to know a little bit more where the crowd is coming from.
We did do a survey, it was a voluntary survey of participants, obviously, you know, we can't require them to do a survey. We did take a volunteer survey, and we did share the results of that survey with the Parks Recreation and Social Services Commission. I can, you know, forward that, the results of that survey to the city manager who, who can share them with you. There were requests for more Hispanic, more Latin-type music, along with a few other things. I, I think our sample size is only, is like less than 20 surveys, though, so it's a relatively small number.
But was the survey also asking whoever's attending their SIP code?
I believe that was one of the questions, yes, but obviously, it's optional, and, and some people chose not to.
Are we able to have someone at the gate and asking what SIP code you are from, and we check, check it off? Is that illegal to do? Just to get a survey, you know, it's not to...
I wouldn't do it at the gate because it starts to seem like it might be a barrier to entry. Certainly, if you had people go around and ask people once they're inside and seated or inside and eating, and just ask and, you know, be upfront with them and say, we're trying to gauge, you know, where attendees are coming from, that would be fine, but I wouldn't do it at the gate for that reason.
Okay, thank you.
There's also like four to five different entrance points at the park, so we would have to, if we were going to have a...
Yeah, I, I would be interested in, in seeing, you know, where we're getting the attendance from.
I can share the survey results with the city manager, and at least that's a start.
That would be great, yeah, but as far as funding this, if, you know, donations would be great, but then we would have to get it out of the general fund, because a big percentage of our residents, you know, should bring us their taxes, and they're, they're Hispanics.
Okay, let's hear from Pat Kearney.
Burn it, fire it.
Yeah, well, I, I don't necessarily subscribe to the whole just the Blues event. I think most of our events, we get a lot of outside people. To say that one is, I, I would feel a little weird about just targeting that one and seeing, you know, with all of them. And then when that was implemented, I wasn't here, I'm just going forward, you know, for events, just saying, if more and more people come with it, establishing some kind of guidelines, because I do think that, you know, I, I do think that it's, we should have some kind of measures for how events get made. That's why, the only reason why I'm suggesting to use outside funds is then you at least can argue, well, we've fundraised for these, you know, you're welcome to do it on your own, and then it gets cumbersome with such a small city to be, actually feasibly be able to do a lot of events. That was my only concern is, I, I, I understand where everyone's coming from, but at the same time, how do you make it a little bit of an even playing field for people that may want to do something, and, you know, it looks like we're pushing one over another, but I do get it, you know? The population definitely has changed. But I'm also looking at, you know, what about those minority groups? I, I guess they'd be considered minority groups in the city, you know, who may want to do something, you know, and they do want to do something, how do we make it an even playing field to where they'd be able to say, okay, come, okay, how do we do it this way? That, that's my only thing, is playing devil's advocate and, you know, making sure that other people too have the ability to bring forward ideas.
Go ahead, Robert, you go before, you have a bunch of questions.
Okay, um, so with the Blues Festival, so there was a period that we didn't have the Blues Festival because of COVID. And because of COVID, when we did bring it back, people's habits had changed, and so, and that was reflective in the, the low number of attendance versus pre-COVID, it was building up, right, to a reasonable number. So I'm okay with having this event as a, not a multicultural event, but a Hispanic Heritage event, but I don't want it to replace the Blues Festival, because we're building that up. And just like any event, the first time you, you do it, it might be, you know, lightly attended or what have you, but as you build it up, you know, throughout the years, and you stay consistent, then people will put it on their calendars, right, and then come out. The Blues Festival, of course, this year, I think, is this, would this be our second year? Well, you, you wasn't here before, was you here before, um, last year?
No. I've only been part of one Blues Festival, but I think it happened in '22, '23, and '24.
Well, what I'm trying to remember is, since, since we suspended it through COVID, was last year the first year we had it?
I thought it was back in 2022.
The second year.
No, Mr. Mayor, we've had it a couple of years in a row, about three, I believe. I think it got rained out one time. So I've been here as city manager.
Twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four.
Yes.
Okay, okay. So at any rate, so there was a pause, you know, and then people, of course, we have to get in the habit of attending, and so I would like for, see that play out, to see if we can build it, build it back up. But that's separate from, from this event, because this event, I do want to have it, and I'm okay with it being a Hispanic Heritage Month event, long as it's Cubana music there.
We'll put it in.
But that was aside, but, but I'm okay, I'm with it. And then for as the general fund is concerned, I don't think you can raise enough money to have solely donations, so might have to be a combination of both. Like, for instance, in Carson, when they do the June 10th event, that caters to everyone in the community, but by large, the African-Americans usually turn out for that event because it has some significance. But they raise money through a nonprofit. Now, yes, the city is involved, you know, and obviously some city of money is involved in that event, right? But for them to rely on 100% donations, or even 100% city of funding, people could argue that, oh, but they do, they do things for other ethnicities, though, they do one for, for Filipino Americans, African-Americans, which is Juneteenth, even though it doesn't, you know, say African-American is in there, but the reality of it is that it's African-American event largely, and they do one for Hispanic Heritage, and I think they do one, one other. They got a lot of festivals going on in, in that city. But yeah, the Blues Festival, let, let's, let's continue with the Blues Festival, but let's somehow add this to it, and, and use a mixture of city funds and donations. Pat?
Okay, let us put the ad hoc together and see what we can do, and see how, what we raise, and we can offset the general fund, and maybe we can have it in September, and maybe for Cinco de Mayo, we can have something.
Okay.
No, that takes away, because Cinco de Mayo is a, is a Mexican celebration.
Okay.
So, and National Hispanic Heritage Month is already designated nationally from September 15th to October 15th.
Maybe in October then, yeah.
So I had proposed October 11th.
Okay.
But, you know, the, the, between, as long as it's between that September 15th and October 15th, you know, it's flexible.
Yeah. Okay, well, let's get the ad hoc to go in and see what we can do, because I really believe Cinco de Mayo is a, and I'm, I'm going to be racist, it's a white person, it is, my wife tells me that all the time, Cinco de Mayo is for white people.
And you might want to clarify that your wife is, what is your wife?
Hispanic.
Hispanic.
Very much Hispanic.
Okay.
But let, let's form the ad hoc to see what we do.
Okay. Let's hear from a member of the public on this item.
Evening again. So a couple of things I'd like to, Matthew Harbison, a couple of things just to keep note of, I'd like people to think that when Longdale does something, we do it well. I don't want us to put things on the calendar or in the agenda just to check boxes, because when you put off subpar events, people don't want to show up to them, people don't want to show up to other events, because then they liken it to the same thing. So if the city's name's behind something, we need to make sure that we do what's needed to make it a quality event. That being said, we may need to look at the events that we're currently putting on and reassess whether or not there's something we should continue doing, and if money needs to be reinvested somewhere else. And I say this because as we look at the calendar for the city, we have different events that are different times, and there are a lot of people who say they're going to be somewhere. Oh, you're going to have this? I'll be there! And then something happens. Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll donate, and then, oh, I forgot. I, I mean, this isn't just, this, this is a universal thing. I know that we had the Longdale Youth Day Parade, and I know it got rained out, and I believe we still had to pay some money to the Sheriff's Department and a variety of other things, because we had some contracts for security and other things, and even though it rained, there was still money that was paid out. And so there's money that's being invested in things that didn't even happen, and now if we're going to have these events, like my church wanted to do an event, and we were going to have it someplace, and one of the things that are on standard forms now are, are you providing your own security, or are you going to use ours? Here are the fees, and these are the expectations. So in today's society, we can't just have a, let's open the parks and have just a bunch of people hang out, there has to be a police presence. So this is going to be budgetary items, these are going to be big-ticket items, we have to deal with electricity, there's a variety of things that need to be there. And so obviously, you think about these things, you put them into, into play, but from the staff point of view, they're scurrying around trying to handle all the little things that you're putting on them, and hopefully, nothing slips through the cracks, and up at the top, yeah, this, they gave us a packet, it looks really good, but there's a lot of little pieces, and the one thing I don't want is whatever we choose to do, we do not do it well. And if we do something, yeah, all right, let's do a Hispanic Heritage one, and then it falls flat, and it's, now nobody wants to do it in the future, I don't know, and my thought is, reevaluate everything that we're doing. If we're not doing well at something, we should pull back on that and focus our eggs in another basket so that we can do well. That's the goal. May the city of Longdale do well in whatever we do.
So here in the discussion, what is the pleasure of this body concerning this item? And let's not forget the possible formation of establishing an ad hoc subcommittee.
I'm still good with that, I think Councilman Telavera wants to be on it.
I definitely will.
I'm okay with an ad hoc committee, subcommittee, and then they could bring back whatever they discuss.
Okay. All right. Let me ask the city attorney.
One more comment based off of the public comment is the other concern is, these events do take a lot of time to put into it. I would suggest maybe starting somewhat small to gauge things, and also to plan it adequately so that you learn the kinks of it, because like you said, the Blues Festival took time to gain traction, and I think that maybe starting off and testing, seeing what other cities do, reaching out to, I know the museum's a great asset, and, you know, they, they're able to help facilitate a lot of things, so that's my only suggestion.
Okay, so when we establish the subcommittee, they can take that under consideration? So what's the recommendation? Is there, is there a motion that we start a subcommittee with Frank and Pat?
Well, who's volunteering and...
Frank wants to volunteer and Pat.
Yeah, I'll, Pat and I.
I'll motion, I guess, to have Pat and Frank as the ad hoc subcommittee.
And I second it.
I'll second it.
Okay, fine.
Just so the record will be okay. Okay, so the motion's being made by Cuevas that we start an ad hoc subcommittee to look into doing a, an annual festival recognizing Hispanic American contribution to the community, and it was seconded by Mayor Pullen Miles. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Consensus is just fine, and ad hoc can be made by the mayor himself, so yes, consensus is just fine, and I know that staff and the ad hoc members have heard all of the comments of the council, and so we'll take that direction under advisement.
Okay, so moved, so the mayor's going to appoint these two gentlemen to the, Frank...
Never been called a gentleman.
You're not a gentleman. You're a gentle lady.
Gentle and...
Okay. Okay, Madam City Clerk, we, we won't require a vote.
Okay, noted, thank you.
Okay. Let's hear 17, report of attendance at meetings by council members. Telavera.
Okay. Just reporting that on the 6th, I participated in the Youth and Government Day that we had here, it was outstanding. We had a good group of students from, from the local high schools, and thank you, Jason, for putting it all together, it went great, provided us some good food, and, and as we mentored the, the students here, some of them really just took... some of them really just took to the role. And the person that was assigned to me, I didn't even coach her on asking questions, but she wanted to ask questions. So it was, it was a fantastic event. I was really happy to be a part of that event and see also that, you know, I think, I think politics, you know, was awakened in some of them. So there were our future leaders, and I, you know, I was appreciative that that I was able to be able to be part of that. On the 7th, I had a virtual meeting with Aura Ann from Holly Mitchell's office. She gave me a lot of the lowdown on what Supervisor Mitchell's office does and things that are available, and gave me a lot of resources also. On the 12th, on Monday, I attended the Senior Mother's Day Luncheon. I would say there were about maybe 100 moms in attendance. I brought a little gift for them, and I ran out, so I know there was at least 100. So it was good to see them dancing and taking part with them. And then last, from Thursday to Sunday, we attended the California Contract Cities Conference. I had a good time there also, learned a lot, did some networking. So met up with the mayor from Montebello and made a connection there, and telling me about how the Mexican consulate takes, takes council members in cities and shows them what's happening in their country. And there's a state-of-the-art medical facility in Tijuana, you know? And then took them also to Valle de Guadalupe. So it was interesting, and I learned a lot, and I'm gonna be finding out what to do to get on that executive board. That's all I have.
Okay, let's hear from Soraya.
Yes, so I had a steering committee for the South Bay Cities Council of Government. We set the agenda for the next meeting, which is, or for the board meeting, which is Thursday. So I'll be there. And then I did attend Contract Cities from Thursday, and I left Saturday. I wasn't able to do the whole event. But as my colleague mentioned, it's a great opportunity. A lot of times, that's where you're able to have these, those conversations with other council members, colleagues, and just kind of ask them, you know, hey, how do you do things? Or they bring up items, and you kind of come to find that you all kind of have similar issues. And you see, how do you get around it? So that was great. And then I did have an item, sorry, to add to the list of that Excel sheet of penny items from council members. So when we have businesses, we always ask them, hey, hire Longdale residents, please. You know, we make it a, you know, so people can work and live in the city. Can we do some kind of a policy? Not a policy, but a, what I want to see is if a resident wants to apply to the city, and they have the qualifications that they could be given, that be taken into account at the hiring process, if we're asking businesses to do that, why not the city do that as well? And I'm not saying that unqualified people, you know, just get positions because they live in the city, but if they're just as qualified, and it comes down to the decision-making, that be taken into account. I think we should be pushing for that. And with that, I'll pass it along.
Okay, Councilwoman McQuavis.
All right, and that much going on for me. On 5/12, I was on a Zoom call with the LA County Medical, we discussed the LA County Medical Debt Data Ordinance that they're trying to pass. It'll probably get to Sean's desk sometime in a couple of months, just for us to review. It's interesting, it was an interesting call. Too quick, not, we weren't able to ask too many questions. But there's gonna be a second one that I'm gonna log in to discuss how to help our, our community with their medical debts. And then I also attended the Contract City Annual Municipal Service, Municipal Seminar, not Services, Seminar. Very interesting, got to talk to, like Bernadette said, other council members on what they did in their cities and get some of their feedback. So it was, it was a nice weekend. That would be all.
Very good. Mr. Protem, Pat Kearney?
I attended the Youth in Government Day. This is Frank's first one. Robert and I have been on it since, I got on Tim, we used to have him all the time. Used to have all three high schools, Anne Lloyd, participate. Jason did a great job in a last-minute thing to get those students here. Great program, outstanding staff, great job. I attended the elaborate trust of Norrisai where they pay out money to some people. I also attended the LA County West Vector Board Meeting on 5/8. It lasted quite a while because there was some sidebars going on. I had to call, attended to the attorney of General Counsel that was going on. I also attended the Mother's Day Lunch with Councilman Telavera. I brought my wife, I bought her lunch for $5, big spender. And then also, I went to Contract Cities Annual Seminar Conference. We had a great time. I did speak to some people about powwows and stuff. And I want to wish everybody, I'm not gonna say Happy Memorial Day because Memorial Day is not a happy day. I want those to represent the people that, ladies and gentlemen, that passed on fighting for this country, and we honor them. It's not a happy day for their families, so I did not put Happy Memorial Day. I'll put Memorial Day, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I attended also the Youth in Government Day. Jason and your staff, you guys did a great job with that event, short notice. My student was pretty.
And he wore two hats.
Well, he's, yeah, he's wearing two hats. He was the mayor and the mayor protem. But he was pretty, pretty engaged. So I want to thank you guys for putting that on. Hopefully, next year, all the high schools will be able to participate. I also attended the Contract Cities where Brenda Almost from Paramount is the new president. Which was ironic because that was my first time meeting her, although I've seen her in passing. But it's my first time meeting her, although I recently voted for her for, to be on AQMD board through the mayor's city selection committee. After having an in-depth conversation, of course, with her, right? But that was our first time meeting face-to-face. But I had a lot of conversations with certain people about different programs, things of that nature, which I'll have the city attorney, city manager look into pretty soon. One of the things I was interested in, of course, and I don't know if anyone else has mentioned this, was taking a tour of the jails, the LA County jails. Because there was a presentation by, I guess the sheriff was doing the presentation. I guess that's when I came up with that idea. Because he was talking about, you know, men, men central, what is it called?
Men Central Jail.
Yeah, men, men central. No, say it. What is it, what is it called?
I think it's called Central, well, I asked the lieutenant, Central Men's Jail, correct?
That's what I, that's what I said. Yeah, in so many words, yeah. And so I thought, you know, hey, why don't we get a tour of that? Not necessarily as a group, but even individually if we need to. But other than that, it was a good, a good time, it was head by all. And that's all I have. And that's all I'll take. Okay, so let's see. We have a closed session, conference with legal counsel concerning legal litigation, existing litigation, I should say. Let's have the city attorney's remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is gonna be under Government Code Section 54956.9D1. The case is City of Longdale versus LA Investment. I do think this should only take between five and 10 minutes. So for anybody else in the room, we, hopefully, will be back pretty quickly. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we have returned from closed session. I'm gonna ask the city attorney to give the report.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council was briefed on the Longdale versus LA Investment case. No reportable action was taken this evening. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, it's time for adjournment. City council will be held at 6:30 PM on Monday, June 2nd, 2025, in the Longdale City Hall Chambers. It is now 9:16. We are adjourned.